I'd like to call the September twentieth, two thousand twenty-two regular city council meeting to order. Votes this evening will be recorded using the city's electronic voting system. The invocation tonight will be provided by Rabbi Dennis Linson from Temple Judea of Laguna Hills.
I'm honored to be here. Thank you Mayor Piquenyo, Mayor Protem Cerbo, esteemed council members, and dedicated and hard-working city staff. Thank you for your kind invitation tonight, and for accommodating my need to share my words remotely. Our ancient rabbis comment on this verse from scripture in the Book of Numbers. When the Israelites came to the wilderness of Mount Sinai, God said, "Is it consonant with the dignity of Torah that I should give holy scripture to a generation of cripples?" We as modern readers can't help but cringe at portrayal of a God callous to those of us with difficulty walking, hearing, seeing, or writing without assistance. Is this the God of compassion, mercy, love we desire to hold dear and call divine? The ancient comment of our rabbis sets up for an expectation for God to justify their expulsion. Yet that is not what happens. Our rabbis continue, "What did God do?" God bade the angels to come down to Israel and heal them. Rather than expelling the Israelites who were physically challenged, God affected a way to reintegrate them into the community. We too need to find ways to deal with our propensity as humans to judge people based on appearances. Like God, our primary efforts must be to assist people, assist all of us, in not having to be defined by a physical challenge or disability. By providing funds for research and funds for necessary accommodations, we can allow more people to learn, to work productively, to dream, and to live their dreams. We can make of ourselves God's healing angels. Still, there will remain those of us who cannot live in quotes "normal" lives, others who will not look like everyone else, and others whose physical abilities prevent them from melting into the crowd. So the task of becoming God's healing angels, while always a priority, cannot be our only task. The other priority must be to learn to see individuals, not their appearances, as paramount. No one should be defined by a physical or other challenge. Here scripture offers us a collection of heroes who were disabled yet glorious. Jacob with his limp, Moses with his speech defect, Miriam with her skin disease, all offer examples of human giants who tower in scripture, precisely because they are not viewed through the prism of their disability. It's not that those challenges were not real, or a continuing part of who they were, yet their generation was somehow able to see those disabilities as but one aspect of complex and truly wonderful individuals. Their disabilities didn't solidify into a mask that hid the person from the community. Our sages tell us, "Do not look at the container, rather look at what the container contains." In teaching ourselves to see the inner sparks that light a person's soul, rather than glancing at the casing that holds those precious assets of personality, of aspiration, of caring, we each of us can act like God in the wilderness, healing when we can and transcending limits when we cannot. Tonight, may you have a productive meeting in addressing and advancing the vital business of our community, and let us say amen.
Thank you. The pledge allegiance to the flag of our country will be led by Chancellor High of Boy Scout PAC twelve-ten.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chancellor. We'll move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the city council or staff request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Well, before we do that, why don't we do public comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we have two public comments tonight. The first one from Randy Johnson, second speaker Colton Wood.
Oh, good evening, Council. Randy Johnson, if I had my druthers tonight, I'd be home watching the Dodgers game, but civic duty calls. I've got three topics here for general public comments. First one, I sent an email to Mr. Teddermer and Mr. Voits. This is twelve days ago. Never received an answer back. That's the reason I'm here. I don't get an answer back, I take it public. Okay, Mr. Teddermer, is that fair? Okay, I know you're not going to say anything, you're just going to stare at me. But, so anyway, I sent him an email, and I said that since you're not going to participate in the candidate's forum like we're going to have for District Two on the twenty-eighth of this month, why don't you have your own question and answer forum, so we can come and we can ask you questions about your past performance, and maybe about your vision for the next four years? No response at all. It's like you don't care. I guess you get a free ride for four years, Voits get a free ride for eight years. They just don't care. The residents mean nothing to them, okay? So that's number one. Number two, with regard to Mr. Pankuenyo, you know, I submitted on the sixth of September an email that I mailed out on the August sixteenth, and it dealt with the inconsistencies in the speaker policy, okay? And he still hasn't answered the question, "Why sometimes, sir, do you allow speakers to listen to the city presentation for discussion items, and sometimes you don't?" That's discriminatory. You're discriminating against those people who you don't allow to speak, or listen to the city presentation. I want to know why, and I think I have a right to know why. You're just completely silent, you sit there and you're mute. That's not leadership, man. Come on, get with the program. Answer the question. Why do you allow some public speakers to listen to the city presentations during discussion items, others you don't? And I think we should be able to listen to it, because I want to make a completely informed presentation when I speak at this podium. I can't do it unless I'm allowed to look at the PowerPoint and allowed to listen or listen to the city's presentation. The third one has to do with this care court, and as all you know, this is passed, the governor signed it, it passed in the legislature, a hundred and two to two. Mr. Pankuenyo's against it, and he won't tell us why. I mean, or he won't explain himself. And also, he went on California Insider for like thirty-five minutes, identified himself as the mayor for Lake Forest, and yet no disclaimer about, "This is only my opinion, not the opinion of the city," okay? And like he's speaking for all of us. You don't speak for us, sir. Probably most of us want this care court to get these homeless people off the streets, and yet you never explain. I want an explanation, sir. Thank you.
Next speaker is Colton Wood.
Who are as forgotten, I'm a local civil rights activist. I got famous filming the police, doing a variety of things, mostly service dog stuff, that's just what started it. I feel at this point they have a vendetta against me. I have stalkers that have bothered me for years and have done horrible things to me. I came over a year ago to the city council here about impersonation, and the police still haven't done a damn thing about it. It's still going on. We're talking six figures, hundreds of thousands of people duped into thinking they're talking to me. And now, the police seem to be retaliating against me. I'm the guy that'll show up, there was a sting up here in the local park where they were, the cops were sitting there giving out parking tickets to people picking up their kids from school, a normal daily activity, and it was catching people by surprise, and they were just, you know, it's a money racket, a sting operation. So I'm sitting there recording, and the police get mad about that, and they do wild things to me. I just got out of jail. They took me to jail. First, they impounded the motorcycle I was on, claiming my papers were invalid. They were lying, my papers were valid. And then they doubled down, and I got out of jail and tried to keep me from getting my bike back. Again, claiming my papers are invalid. They're not, they're fine. Last year, right after I spoke at the city council meeting, they called me in the first thing in the morning, nine AM, and said, "Hey, we want to talk to you about these people, the impersonation, the bullies, the stalkers. Come talk to us." So I went up there, to the police station, real quick, like, and I didn't pack up my camp. Big mistake, because they took me fifty-two fifty, locked me in a psych ward, and then stole everything I owned while I was indisposed. And now today, at five AM, I'm doing a vlog of myself exercising out in the wilderness, getting ready to go out in the trails. I lock up my motorcycle, shack it up, leave, come back at about four PM, and the police have sawed off the chains, defeated my disc lock, and impounded my bike out front of me, and again have the impound lot asking me about my papers. My papers are fine, I assure you. The police not only won't do their job and protect me against hate crimes, people have pulled up and told me they're going to kill me for being a faggot, and I've caught it on video. I showed you one video of me defending myself against a dude like that, and I ended up going to jail, even though I was the victim. And now the police are just doing straight-up grand theft auto. Like, they think that they're going to get me to move, they're going to get me to go to somewhere else, but it's not going to work. I moved already and built a new life, and my problems just followed me, and the same bullies just followed me. Just made it worse, so you're stuck with me. And the police really need to stop attacking the innocent and do their damn job. Thank you.
That concludes our public comment.
Okay. So now we'll go to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendars are considered routine and will be enacted by one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the city council or staff request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Are there any requests to move an item from the calendar?
Yes, I'd like to pull item five, please.
Mr. Mayor, I have requested to speak on items four and five.
Okay, let's bring them up.
Randy Johnson for item four.
Item four is a discussion around minutes of the regular city council meeting held on September sixth.
In Lake Forest, of course, last meeting I spoke about the problem with the meeting minutes, and you all know about this, okay? Ms. Modazzetti got back to me, bless her heart, so she gets credit for this. However, I never got an answer. This is the strange part about it. You know, she wrote me an email, and it says here, "Just so you know, I'm following up the clerk's office regarding meeting minutes backlog. That's really too long to have meeting minutes posted. I hope to get back to you with an answer and resolution of some sort." So on the public record, folks, you can read about it, okay, plus my report here. So I submitted this. You know, minutes from February second, two thousand twenty-one, May fourth, two thousand twenty-one, and July sixth, two thousand twenty-one are still missing. What kind of an operation is this? You know, I went to other South Orange County cities here, Elisa Viejo, Dana Point, Irvine, Laguna Beach, Laguna Hills, Mission Viejo, Newport Beach, Anna Margarita, San Clemente, all of them have it in sequential order. All their minutes in sequential order, okay? Only one minute per agenda from the last meeting, okay? And also, they post the, a short statement or even a paragraph of what the public commenters say. All she does is put down our names, with no idea of what the public speaker said. You know, these meeting minutes are really, really important, because it's a written record of what takes place during the council meetings. So people can go to the minutes, and they can see, "Oh, Mr. Johnson spoke on this," well, I'd like to follow up and see what he had to say about it. They don't have that option here, like they do in the other cities. What the heck is going on here? And the meeting minutes are missing, or you have six meeting minutes for one agenda item? I've never seen anything so disorganized before, and it makes me wonder, if this is happening in our plain view, what's going on behind closed doors? If it's this disorganized, if I can uncover this, what the heck is going on that we can't see? That's what concerns me, and nobody seems to care. All you people sit up there just like bobbleheads. At least Ms. Modazzetti got back to me, she deserves credit for that. The rest of you are bobbleheads. That's all you are. And of course, Mr. Pankuenyo at the end of the meeting says, "Oh, I support staff a hundred percent, they're doing a fantastic job." No, they're not, sir! And maybe it's time for you as mayor to call them out, and do your job. Otherwise, step down and go do something else. Volunteer someplace else. I mean, it's just absolutely disgusting. I can't talk about everything I wrote down in this report, but anyway, this has got to get cleaned up, folks, because it's so wrong, and it has to get cleaned up, and somebody better speak up. Otherwise, you're all in on it, you're nothing but a gang. Thank you.
Next speaker, Randy Johnson for item number five.
And Mayor, I'm happy to introduce the item, so the community understands since I pull it, this item is authorize city manager to respond to Orange County grand jury reports related to municipal operations.
Timer. Okay, on the last item, Ms. Modazzetti never got back to me when I asked her if I could participate in a conference call with the city manager. No response at all. I don't know where the city stands on these meeting minutes. I still want an answer on that. Okay, this has to do with the transfer of authority from the council over to the city manager for responses to the Orange County grand jury. I'm just kind of shaking my head, what's going on here? This has been an incorporated city since nineteen ninety-one, and now they want to give the city manager the authority to respond to grand jury inquiries, which could really be serious stuff. I mean, they could accuse the city of allegations, criminal or civil, and that's the council's responsibility. I looked at all the council responses or the city responses online, going to the Orange County Grand Jury. I would say eighty-five to ninety percent of all the responses are signed by the mayor. It's the mayor's responsibility, he's the elected official, he's the one accountable to the people. We didn't elect Deborah Rose. She's not my representative. What would you give her that kind of authority for, and why would you change this in two thousand twenty-two when nobody's even brought this up before? It's the strangest thing. So why isn't this a discussion item, number one? First question, why isn't a discussion item, there should be a discussion on the panel about this? There isn't. It's a consensus item. Number two, is this a convenient way for the council to bow out on a duty that has always been a council responsibility? Number three, have you surveyed the residents about our opinion on this important matter? Number four, the Orange County Grand Jury responses have always been a Lake Forest council duty since nineteen ninety-one. Why change in two thousand twenty-two? Too many political sinkholes for elected officials? Is that might be a reason? And number five, I recall when Deborah Rose arranged for the suspension of our parking ordinances without the council even knowing about it. It was leaked by a concerned citizen. Is this another one of those? What are you going through the back door here for? You know? I mean, she shouldn't have the authority to respond. Now, is she going to respond, and you won't even know about it, just like with the suspension of the parking ordinance? Probably. If she's given that authorization, this is crazy. I don't know what you people are doing, and why is it on the consensus calendar? It should be on a discussion item. So we can listen to your input. Thank God that Mr. Teddermer brought this up, and he pulled the item as well as I did. Thank you, sir.
That completes our comments.
Okay. Councilmember Teddermer?
Did you want to deal with five, or did you want to deal with the remainder, or what's your pleasure?
Let's do the remainder, just hold up five.
I'll move the consent calendar for the remainder, please.
I'll second that, noting my opposition to item two, please.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor. I pulled this item, again, it's authorize city manager to respond to Orange County grand jury reports related to municipal operations. I believe the spirit of this was to provide an opportunity to address the responses to the two grand jury reports, one regarding homelessness, the other regarding California refund value or CRV for beverage containers. I talked to staff earlier and asked them to provide a summary of the response that's in its current form, so that could be made available. So I will turn it over to Assistant City Manager Neves to provide a summary of the responses regarding these two grand jury reports.
Mayor, members of the council, I'll go through a summary of each of the responses, one for the homelessness, and then one for the CRV grand jury reports, and then, yeah, I'll go through the summary first. The city has been asked to respond to two Orange County grand jury reports. How is Orange County addressing homelessness, and where have all the CRV fees gone? The first of these reports asks for response to the grand jury findings and recommendations related to the need for emergency shelters and services, the lack of adequate rental units to support the unhoused, the need for facilities to house people with mental illness and addiction issues, and the need for affordable housing. Many of the grand jury's findings and recommendations related to the emergency shelters require further action by the county, including funding and studies, before the city can take additional action. The city also notes that the key assumption underlying the grand jury's finding that additional homeless shelters would reduce the number of unsheltered homeless is wrong. The city notes that the two thousand twenty-two point-in-time count actually saw a significant reduction in the number of unsheltered homeless in the city as compared to the most recent two thousand nineteen point-in-time count. The city agrees with other findings and recommendations in the report, particularly those related to available rental and affordable housing, while noting that the city has done considerable work in the area of affordable housing. Let me say that again. While noting that the city has done considerable work in affordable housing. The report also note that the county and the city should collaborate open facilities to support these with mental illness and addiction issues. The city agrees with this and notes that this recommendation will be implemented by each city and the county as part of adopting the six-cycle housing element. In sum, the city agrees with many of the findings and recommendations in the grand jury report, partially disagrees with others, and finds that further study is needed before drawing conclusions on others. So that's a short summary on the homelessness grand jury report, and I'll go through the CRV one, and then we can bring it back to council. The second grand jury report, where have all the CRVs gone, investigates the unclaimed California refund value CRV California refund value CRV deposits made on beverage bottles and cans in Orange County, and asks the city to respond to specific findings and recommendations in the report. Their main concern comes from their finding that the quantity of convenient redemption centers is constantly changing, making it difficult for consumers to recover their deposits, causing residents to place more CRV in curbside carts, which haulers then redeem. They recommend the city make CRV a priority where, whenever negotiating a contract with haulers. They further recommend applying for grant funding and developing extensive community outreach for CRV redemption. Okay, staff partially disagrees with most of their findings and recommendations, mainly because their findings include many assumptions that the city is not able to confirm, or certain terms are not well-defined, making it difficult to fully agree with the findings. Although the proposed response partially disagrees with many of the findings, the city will or has implemented all of the recommendations as staff understands them. The recommendations include keeping CRV as a priority in the franchise agreement, evaluating grant opportunities as applicable, and providing community outreach programs about CRV. So those were two summaries on both the grand jury reports that the city would like to get signed and turn in. So I will ask the city council to authorize the CM to sign these, just these two reports, so that we could submit them on their due dates. One is due September 21st, and one is due September 28th. And then staff will also post both these reports tomorrow morning on the city website. We will have hard copies at the city clerk's office for any resident that would want to come in and read them, and we will push them out further in social media through the PIO's office. I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Any further discussion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Neves. For legal counsel, I share the comments from Mr. Johnson, that I think this should be signed by the mayor. That's not what's presented in this particular item. What would be your response to my suggestion that we would authorize the mayor to sign on behalf of the city these two pieces of correspondence?
If that is council's prerogative, that is certainly possible at this time.
Okay. Then I would like to make a motion that we authorize the mayor to sign the two documents as summarized and as will be posted, right? As I understand it, you are going to post these, you're going to post the two letter responses?
Yes, we will post the two letter responses in the morning on the city website.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll have, we'll adjust the two letters going back to the grand jury to have the mayor's signature on both of them.
That's my motion, if it gets a second. That's my motion, as the mayor sign on behalf of the city.
I can second that, but I have a question. I don't recall ever seeing the grand jury reports. I don't know if any of you have, but I would recommend in the future, if there were to be another response to this or a counter, that we also get a copy of the report as well, so that we can do our due diligence.
We did get a copy of the reports in our city manager's update last Thursday.
Yes.
That's why I missed it? Okay. So that's a little late, though, Thursday, to approve something on a Tuesday.
Well, that's when the staff was finished doing their research on these items.
Okay, but I would like a copy of the grand jury report, if in the future, if we can get it out earlier to council, so that we can provide comments to staff prior to them drafting a response.
We will get that.
Okay.
Just a quick question I'd like to have as well. Can staff provide any kind of information about what it was about allowing city manager for this responsibility versus the mayor? I mean, what was the impetus behind doing that? What was the benefit, or what was the expediency, or what was the motivation for it?
This was getting the reports, this report, the homelessness report answered and having a due date of September 21st, just trying to speed it and get it there on time.
That motion passes 4-1 with Mayor Protem Serbo dissenting.
Okay, thank you. So next, we'll go to the public hearing, and I would like to open up, which is the annual review of development agreements, and I'd like to open up the hearing. Mr. City Manager, Assistant City Manager, can you please introduce this item?
This item is the annual review of the developer agreements. I will have Adrian Grahava come up here as our senior management analyst in the city manager's department, and he'll give a short report.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. The item before you is the annual review of development agreements. State law and the terms of the development agreements, also referred to as DAs, require the city to conduct an annual review of active DAs for compliance with their respective terms and conditions. Good faith compliance shall be established if the owner is in compliance with every term and condition of their DA. The first DA review was conducted in August of 2009. Since then, the city council has conducted DA reviews for each fiscal year thereafter, and found that each owner has been in good faith compliance with its respective DA requirements and obligations. This DA review is centered on development activities associated with each property owner through fiscal year 2020, 21. Pardon me, through fiscal year 2021, 2022. The DA review includes the following developers and corresponding development projects. The Portola Center, which features Baldwin, Landsea, and KB Home developers; their Serrano Summit project features Lennar; the Terasina project features Shea Homes; and the Meadows project features Toll Brothers. This image is included as an attachment to the agenda report. The red box indicates the total number of permits pulled through fiscal year 21, 22. Based on the number of actual units entitled for active or in-construction developments, approximately 49% have been issued permits. At this time, staff recommends the city council find that each property owner to be in good faith compliance with their respective DAs for activities ending June 30, 2022. And that ends my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Madam City Clerk, do we have any requests to speak on this matter?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so I will now close the hearing. So council members, do you have any questions or their motion?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. I recall, maybe my memory's a little fuzzy, but there was an issue with Baldwin with hauling properly, disposing materials. Has that been rectified?
I'll go ahead and send that one over to our Assistant City Manager Neves.
Yes, Councilmember Motacity, that was all rectified on their hauling issues and their routes and everything that was going on and that a while ago.
I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
Okay, let's vote.
And that motion passes unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you. So item number 14 is a public hearing for the issuance of tax-exempt bonds by the California statewide communities development authority for the use by Meadows Seniors LP for its proposed senior affordable housing project at the Meadows. So I'd like to open the hearing. Mr. Assistant City Manager, can you please introduce this item?
Well, I won't bring Adrian up because he's up here already, so he'll continue on to this. He'll give you a short report on this subject, too. And we also have in attendance Todd Cottle in the audience from CNC Development and...
James Hamill.
James Hamill on Life Size for any questions.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Neves. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. We're here to conduct a public hearing pursuant to the Federal Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, otherwise known as TFR. CNC Development, the developer's affordable housing partner, has asked that the California statewide communities development authority, or CSCDA, be the issuer of tax-exempt financing in an amount not to exceed $24 million. The proceeds of the bonds will be used for the acquisition, construction, and development of a 65-unit multifamily rental housing facility for seniors to be owned and operated by the borrower and located within the Meadows development. The debt to be issued by the CSCDA will be the sole responsibility of the borrower, and the city will have no financial or legal obligation or responsibilities with regard to the repayment of the debt. All financing documents will carry disclaimers that the loan is not an obligation of the city. The city will also bear no costs in the issuance of the proposed debt. This is a private loan between the borrower and their bank. It is recommended that the city council adopt a resolution approving the issuance of the bonds by the CSCDA for the benefit of the borrower. Such adoption is solely for the purposes of satisfying the requirements of TFR. Mr. Todd Cottle from CNC Development is present, and Mr. James Hamill from the California statewide communities development authority is joining us via Life Size. Each is here to answer any questions the city council may have. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, do we have any requests to speak on this matter?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So we'll now close the hearing. Do any members of the council have any further questions or comments for discussion?
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, I've seen the Cottles, CNC Developments projects in other cities, and they do a wonderful job in making their project look, fit into the community and actually not only be houses, but homes for the seniors. And so I'm excited that they're finally in Lake Forest. I think that Lake Forest, the five developments that we had just through, they, for the presentation, shows that Lake Forest, the value of the property is going up and making it unattainable for some of our seniors and some of our young people to actually have places to reside in Lake Forest. And so this is a great addition to the market in Lake Forest, to have people that have ability to not spend as much of their monthly income that are on fixed incomes, still live in Lake Forest with their grandchildren and families. And so I'm excited about this project, and I wholeheartedly move staff recommendation.
Okay. Quick question. How come when we practice...
It's very common. This is a state requirement, so it happens with every affordable housing project.
Okay. Thank you. We had the same type for the National Corps, correct?
Yes.
Mayor, if I could, under discussion, just want to clarify, this is merely to demonstrate to the lenders, et cetera, that we, the city, are in support of this project. That's really all we're doing. There's, you indicated no financial exposure to the city.
That is correct.
This is just us saying we support the project.
That is correct.
Just want to clarify. Thank you.
So I hear the motion.
I will second the motion.
Okay, let's vote.
That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Mr. Assistant City Manager, do you have any additional reports or information to present tonight?
I have no additional information tonight.
Okay. We'll go to council comments. Councilmember Motacity?
All right. We received a request email from the folks that put on the Hunger Walk, Family Assistant Ministries, and they were just asking for a certificate of recognition for the FAM 35th Annual Hunger Walk, and so I'm formally putting in that request.
Okay.
Other than that, I don't really have any other updates, so thank you.
Councilmember Tedder?
Thank you, Mayor. In compliance with AB 1234, where we're required to disclose where we attend events on the city's behalf and cost, I attended the League of California Cities Conference in Long Beach. It was a couple weeks ago, I guess it was, and attended a number of various sessions during the several-day conference. I also attended the Clean Lake Forest event, which is always great, always happy to help and nice to see a good showing of folks. And I attended the ribbon cutting for Visiting Angels recently, so thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Voits?
I, too, attended the California League of Cities in Long Beach. As the alternate to our delegate that day, Councilman Tedder, attending various committee outbreaks, and so it was a good time for us to get best practices from other cities. I, too, visited, attended the ribbon cutting for Visiting Angels here in Lake Forest, and actually make it easier for our seniors to live at home and actually take some of the burden off of families, to have people come in and that are trusted and have a resume and been checked before they come in. So Visiting Angels does a fine job. They're in Lake Forest now, so if you need help with your senior citizens or disabled, Visiting Angels will be happy to help. A Lake Forest-based company of business. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Serbo?
Thank you. Also, I had the opportunity to attend the Lake Forest Cleanup Day, which seems to be more and more momentum, and had representatives from CRNR, Saddleback Church, Terranova Church, Trashwalkers, Rotary Club, so a lot of good community input, and then also a lot of participation there to help keep things clean up for that National Cleanup Day, so that was interesting. Also, this week, all the historians in the room, this is actually Constitution Week, so the great constitution that our country was founded upon, it's an opportunity to remind folks of those documents and to take an opportunity to read through them and just remind us of the foundational elements of how we structure our government and how we are guided by those. Thank you.
Thank you. I, too, attended the Clean Lake Forest event, and I was really happy. I was actually, I had 100-plus people saying happy birthday to me because of somebody. But also, at the, towards the end of, November 19th, we have Elf Yourself. I'm signing up for that 5K, and so if you want to see the mayor run around like an elf and sweat, go ahead and show up. Once again, I'd like to thank staff for all their hard work, and with that, I'll adjourn.